Evening everyone and welcome to the May twenty third's. City of Twalton's city council meeting. I'll go ahead and call the meeting order. We'll start off with our pledge allegiance tonight led by Councilor Grimes.
Good evening and welcome everyone. If you please place your hand over in your heart and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item up is announcements and we have several announcements tonight. We have our public health announcement and I just want to let folks know that the Oregon Health Authority recommended a COVID nineteen booster dose for kids five to eleven years old last week. Children's ages five through eleven who are not immunocompromised should get a booster dose at least five months after receiving the second dose in their primary vaccine series and those children ages five through eleven who are immunocompromised and will receive a third primary series dose should get a booster dose at least three months after receiving the third dose in their primary vaccine series. So make sure to check with your pediatrician and see if your child's eligible for that booster dose now that the Oregon Health Authority has approved that for those children ages five through eleven. That brings us to an employee introduction Assistant Planner Madeline Nelson. There Steve.
Evening Mayor and Council. Nice to see you again. Chief Cooper Assistant Community Development Director. I'm pleased to announce you virtually. Hopefully we'll see you next time in person, but that's virtually Madeline Nelson, our new Assistant Planner. Madeline comes to us most recently from Lenar Homes Northwest. She has an undergraduate degree from University of Oregon, Bducks, and a master's degree in teaching from UP. She started out her career as a teacher but decided being a planner was so much better that she hopped back into our career. Some fun facts about Madeline is she enjoys reading, traveling, going to Timbers and Thorns games and she has two cats, one of whose name Beetle and the other of whom is named Hitchcock.
I was hoping for Beetle juice. That'd be cool.
Don't say it two more times, Mayor.
That's true. Well, welcome Madeline. Would you like to say anything? Welcome and introduce yourself to us.
Thank you so much. I'm really happy to be here. I've been with the city of Twalton for about now and it's been really great getting to know everyone and I'm excited for my future.
All right. Well, welcome. You know, when you work with Lenar, I know we're a very busy community here and I have a feeling you'll never get bored in our planning department because there's always things going on. Want to give you sincere welcome and hopefully we'll see you in person soon once we decide later on tonight about rejoining together in person for city council meeting. So thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to someone, you know, here's someone who joined us and now we have someone who's leaving us. So recognition of retiring Police Chief Bill Steele. This will be led by our City Manager Cheryl Lombos.
Well, I get the pleasure of starting this out and saying a few things about Chief Steele since as I've been his direct supervisor these six years. So funny recruitment story. So six years ago, we were looking for a police chief and I didn't know Bill had never as far as I know, been introduced to him or seen him. And I, the first time I met him was at the interview and then, and the interviews were like on a Friday maybe and I ran into him three times within the next like a week while I was trying to make a decision and I mean very randomly like events and at Red Robin in Sherwood and like, it was so bizarre and I just besides all of his credentials and how he had come across in the interview process and his background, I was like, this is a sign from heaven that I'm supposed to bring him back and give him a second interview. I have so much respect for Chief Steele and I said I didn't, I hadn't worked with him before, but he came to us from Washington County, this office where he was a deputy sheriff seen under Pat Garrett and I have a lot of respect for Sheriff Garrett and Bill had also served as the interim chief of the city of Forest Grove under a contract with Washington County and I have a lot of respect for the city of Forest Grove and so I knew they'll had had been tested and had survived all those things and I knew that he would do a good job. I, I pulled up some of my expectations from Bill, for Bill that first year and I just want to read them off to you. So one, be collaborative. Two, build relationships. Three, encourage excellence. Four, be responsive. Five, be an advocate for police in Twalton. And there were others, but I, as I was reviewing that, I was thinking of how solid that Chief Steele has done for us in all of the areas and it's been a real pleasure and an honor to have served with Bill and to have worked with him in these last six years and I just want to say on behalf of the city organization, thank you to Bill for your service and your partnership these last six years and just wish you the, all the best in, in your retirement.
First yours, Chief Steele.
Well, I'm going to start off by saying that recruitment process, I was not following Cheryl Lynn. It was a mere coincidence. But this is a difficult one for me because I don't like a lock condition for myself. I like to give that out to other people, but that's me and so I'll make this quick and, and I, I've been honored to be the, the chief in Twalton. It's been a wonderful opportunity. I've always appreciated the support, not only the community, but from the council. Cheryl, boss, we've got a great department. You know, we've got wonderful staff that are dedicated to the community. It's made my job a lot easier and yeah, I'm just thankful of the opportunity and honored the last six years and yeah, that's it. Short and sweet.
All right. Well, as Cheryl mentioned, I very much appreciate your service to the city. The last two years to be a police chief's not been the easiest time between the social unrest and COVID and you've been a shining star through both. You've led your department through a community listening session on policing. You were very transparent. You were open. You opened a change. You listened to the community. You made some changes and it made us a better community and better police department that folks know that they're listened to by the department and that you're not hiding anything, that you're fully transparent. You discuss statistics. It's terrific. I also enjoy your, your right on it when I ask you to reach out to someone who's got an issue. I've had many resident shocked that the chief of police will actually call them and that that person is available. Because that doesn't happen in a lot of communities that the chief will be there, answer questions and follow up on any kind of issues or even, you know, praise. And finally, my third thing I really liked that I did in the community was continued the focus on community policing, making sure officers are in touch with the residents in the neighborhoods. It's been tough with, you know, National Night Out and some of our bigger events. Even the small ones we did through COVID, there were officers there talking to the community and you know, being approachable. I've watched many kid get up on that motorcycle, Ben and Rick's motorcycle and have a great time, you know, flashing lights and stuff. And then have that engagement with both the child and the parents so that, you know, folks know that the police are here to help them and they're super friendly and they're a terrific resource in this community. So you've done a great job for the city of Twalton. We're going to issue. I know it's going to be tough to replace you, but you know, I wish you the best in retirement. You set some travel plans, which is great. Get that, get out there and enjoy. So I'm going to open the floor to other city council who'd like to say bye to Chief Steele until we see him at the next police banquet. That's when the real roast starts. Council President Grimes and Councilor Pratt.
Thank you very much. I'm sort of thinking initially that maybe if I don't participate in this portion of the meeting tonight, that you actually won't leave, but that's very selfish on my part. I want to thank you so much for your service and everything you've done for the community and wish you the very best in the next adventure. Two, I wanted to mention that I think are actually three things that I think are very indicative of the job that you've done for us. The first is, I was in a community meeting on Saturday and one of your officers was there doing an update to the citizenry on what's going on in the current state of policing. And when he was done with his what he shared with us, he got a very, very rousing flow of applause from everyone that was there. And I think that that not only shows the enormous appreciation that our community has for officers, but I think that shows what your leadership and your leadership style has brought to the department and the way that they serve the community that that many people felt that overwhelmingly thrilled with our police department and the job that they do. And I think that that's a great reflection on your leadership. The second thing I'm always reminded of is a dear friend had a horrible situation happen to them a couple of years ago and it involved our police department. And their feedback to me, which just completely brought me to tears, was that on the worst day of their life, our police officers, our staff, staff plan and the officers that responded to them made their day better. And I thought, you know, what a huge testament to vast expanse of what you bring to your job that even on someone's very worst day of their life, you're able to come and bring help and comfort. And I, I just think that that's a part of the job that you guys do. And then the last thing I mentioned, Cheryl Lynn reminded me of this when she was talking about your interview portion. As you were going through the interview portion, two that were involved in some of the group interviews actually pulled me aside during the process. Two different people that were in the department and they both told me solicited at two different occasions that you were really something special and that we should do everything that we could to talk with you and, and bring you in more and see if we couldn't come up with a job offer that would appeal to you because one officer and one person that was in administration, both of them felt so strongly about you after meeting you that they felt like you were a great fit for the department. And I think that that's again, a huge testament to you and your leadership style and what you bring to the table that even on a short acquaintance, you brought such a great initial you know, impression that people really strongly about you and wanted to work with you and I just can't thank you enough for what you've done. And I know it's been a really great probably six years and probably some really tough times too, but I've always been so proud of the police department and the job they do in our community and you are a huge part of that. So I thank you. Wish you well.
So Pratt.
Chief Steele, it's, it's really been a pleasure getting to know you over the last few years here and on the Police Foundation, but and I think I know you well enough to know you're really hating this. But I, I've always appreciated like you, I've been in rooms where you've been asked some really tough questions and you're straightforward and honest with the situation and like with the Police Foundation, you're always just looking out for the best interest of the community and what serves the community the best. And I've always really appreciated that. It means a lot that you know, that's a focus and I would agree. I think you've got, you've got Cheryl on super skill of hiring great people and taking hire the right people. And that's why we have that community seen police force that we get those nice letters about therefore donations to the Police Foundation. I just, I'm really going to miss you and also I it's been a rough couple of years for police particular and the COVID and you've always seemed to be ahead of the game and kind of handle the situation and dealt with it in a forward-thinking way and just helped to make our community better. So I'm really going to miss you and I agree, you're going to be very hard to replace.
First of all, thank you for your service and thank you for everything you've done in your, in your, your staff has done to connect to my community. The Spanish speaking community, the Latino community in Twalton. So I just want to thank you for you know, it was, it never felt when I used to swear, but I don't have another word fake to us. And I think that was always the, that's what attracted that, you know, that connection that you, you, you'd never felt like you were just doing your job. It felt like you really did care. So I want to say that everyone that I've come across and, and have met you and met your, your staff has great things about you. And, and we're really, I'm really, really happy and thankful for that. Also for restoring a lot of and I hate to say it, but restoring a lot of trust in the police force through your, through your leadership and, and your staff to me personally, as I've mentioned many times. I'm LA and, and the police station that patrols are, it was from Rappaher Police Station. That doesn't have a good reputation. And so we never like, I've always had this weird thing about, oh, I don't know about cops. They're probably like all corrupt. I had these really bad idea and even so when I moved here 11 years ago, I still felt like I don't think I can trust the police. I'm just going to handle it on my own or you know, things like that. You kind of lived through it when you were growing up in, in, in the neighborhood I grew up in. And you totally changed that. I mean, it's not that, it's just, I started seeing the good things that I remember of, of police officers in my hood because they did a lot of good things. I just because I was so focused on the best, I never really thought of the good things. And when you started talking about all the, I started getting involved. I'm like, yeah, I do remember police officers doing this. I remember we got lost one time and they helped us. So I started thinking of all the great things that the peace officers have done in our neighborhood and it just changed my whole perspective. It was like more good things than the things that I saw. And so I, it was through this, these, through these meetings, it was through this relationship that we built with you and my, my community and I have built with you that made, made my life change. My mentality changed towards police officers. And I really realized that 90% of the time it was good. And then I was just focused on the 10% and that was like years of that. So thank you so much for changing that. I would never see it any other way. So thank you very much and good luck. Have fun, travel. And don't forget about us.
Anyone else like to say anything? All right. Well, with that, we have a proclamation that's going to be read by Councilor Pratt. It's not over yet, Bill. You've got more stuff.
I apologize. Everybody has business to do tonight.
This is very important. Proclamation recognizing Bill Steele on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Bill Steele began his employment with the city of Twalton as chief of police on July sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Coming to Twalton from the Washington County Sheriff's Office where he served since nineteen ninety-six, rising to the rank of chief PD. And whereas Bill's twenty-six-year career in law enforcement has been characterized by a commitment to faithful service, no matter how difficult or complex, Bill has witnessed dramatic changes, not only in the communities he served, but also in the role and scope of law enforcement's responsibility. Through it all, he has remained steady and steadfast in his commitment to safe community and excellence in service. And whereas Bill has cultivated and prioritized strong relationships from supporting the Twalton Community Police Foundation to leading multiple community academies and engaging with the community through efforts such as shop with a cop, turkey's not tickets, coffee with a cop, national, national night out. And whereas throughout his career, Bill has served a professional police department as demonstrated by meeting national and data accreditation standards. In two thousand and twenty, the Twalton Police Department recognizes the top workplace in Oregon, a top workplace in Oregon, further demonstrating the value Bill has placed on creating and maintaining a high-performing culture. And whereas Bill's leadership has helped to navigate the police department through the most challenging of times, he has remained available and responsive. He has focused on doing his best, doing the right thing and treating others with kindness and respect. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of council of the city of Twalton, Oregon, that Bill Steele is thanked, commended and applauded for his service and significant contributions to the city of Twalton. Introduced and adopted this twenty-third day of May, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'm glad that's over with. Thank you very much. Those are very, very kind words.
So your last day is June tenth, correct?
Correct.
And so folks, I've had people asking about what's next and a lot of people know that Captain Greg Pickering is being promoted to inter-in-chief while the city searches for, you know, the difficult process of finding your replacement, but Captain Pickering will be filling your shoes for you and I know you've been working with him for quite a while. So again, best wishes. You will definitely be missed. And like I said, I'm looking forward to next police banquet and you being there. And you don't have to emcee, so we went easier.
True, very true.
All right.
Thank you.
Right. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council. An item that is not on tonight's agenda, please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in this wonderful Zoom meeting that would like to address the council, it would be an appropriate time. And I see Mr. Potts, Dale Potts there.
Yes, I'm.
I have a feeling what you're going to talk about. Go ahead and put your event.
Okay. We've been calling about the Memorial Day commemoration that we have in Twalton. We've been away for two years. And we're coming back. So we have a lot of people that attend, but I want to make sure that they learn this is actually going to happen this year. It's, it's going to occur a week from today. We have Memorial Day was eight thirty. It's going to be at the Winona Cemetery is, is normal and it's, it starts at ten five. On that particular day, we have a thing that people also like afterwards. I'm hoping you can see the screen that shows the, the details. Let's be sure. I'd like to think that people see something and hear both. They're going to remember exactly what's, what's happening. We even have a web, twaltonmemorialday.org. So you can get all the tales off of that website. And the other thing to do after we've had this particular, people know that, make sure they know about the event. I have a couple of people I want to introduce. This is my last year for this particular event. I was since nineteen, two thousand and year two, actually. And I've found it in a really sharp individual. He's a retired Army person. And he's here also, if I can get myself on the screen. His name is Jesse Thompson. And he's only retired from the Army and a couple of things he did, he did some recruiting when he's in the Army, one tour in the Middle East. And he's very interested in doing this event. And that's the key thing to me is having enthusiasm and, and be sharp, which he has both. So I don't know. Jesse, you can say hello.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm Jesse and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Dale. After retiring out of the Army, I met Dale shortly after settling here in Oregon and he told me all about his event and I got real excited about it and really looking forward to future events carrying on this tradition.
Yeah, actually, I see was going to take over in the year two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and twenty. We didn't have it. We're going to take it over to two thousand and twenty-one and have this. So it's actually happening now. We're two thousand and twenty-two. Also introduce our feature. Every year we have an honored vet that we that I'm out at the observation or the commemoration. And this year it's Jesse, excuse me, it's Ken Lynn Kaufman. Got myself unguided here. Now Lynn was in Army and he was a helicopter pilot during Vietnam. Had a lot of experience. He loves flying. And during that time, he earned a Bronze Star, Army Commendation Medal for over twenty-three air medals. He had quite a career doing flying. And also the way I met him, there was a group, all of the, the flying group that comes over during Memorial Day and they do a missing man formation coming in a triangle squadron. And one plane flies away and that's for a missing comrade. If you know that what's happening, it's kind of emotional to see that. Well, he was coordinating that whole area. And we got talking to him and we added our procedure. Then I got to know him better. He's pulled over in that particular function now. So he's going to narrate the, that one, when they fly over. He'll be also going to be our honored vet. So he's going to have double duty. So for the West Coast rave, the group that we're talking about here. You can say, Lynn, you can say a couple of words if you're into that mood. You need to unmute yourself, Lynn. You're still muted, Lynn.
Curse of Zoom continues.
You need to push the unmute.
He's saving his voice for the event.
Does anybody have any questions?
So go over the timeline again, Dale. It's at ten forty-five.
It's on May thirty, which is Monday of next Monday.
And when is the flyover scheduled?
It's at ten forty-five is the flyover.
Okay. You want folks there about probably a little earlier than?
You might bring a chair or two. We're working on, in the past couple, we've had overflow crowds and we we're going to have a hundred fifty chairs there. So that should be enough. If you have a favorite cherry, like you said, and I'd be sure to be helpful to bring that. It's going to be at Winona Cemetery. And then when it's done, we have a free barbecue picnic at the, at the Walton Community Park. So that's, some people come for that part of it. The main thing is patriotism. I mean, this is about as patriotic an event as you can, you can come to. Especially if you have family member who is deceased that served in the military, that's a way to honor them. They're a beauty for some people, but a lot of people just come for patriotism. We work a lot of that.
So I, for given the, I've been going for years. I'd recommend getting there around ten thirty or so because it gets pretty busy. Get a park lot, get settled in so you can enjoy the flyover and the event. And over to Community Park. This year, the city of Twalton is sponsored barbecue. So I invite people to come on over for hot dogs, burgers and chatting with your neighbors that you might not seen in quite a while. So thanks for coming tonight, Dale, and letting us know about the event on Monday.
We'll see, see all of you there.
Yep, they'll see us there. All right. Is anyone else have a public comment this evening?
No one has reached out to me and no one is at the pole center.
All right. Okay. Then I'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. We've got a few things that are consent agenda tonight. These rides are considered routine. They'll be by one motion unless someone in council will like an item removed and heard separately late night. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one. Consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Item two, consideration for approval of a new liquor license application for samurai sushi and Thai. Item three, consideration of resolution number five, six, one, three, dash, twenty-two. Authorizing commercial or collection rate adjustments. Item four, consideration of resolution number five, six, one, five, dash, twenty-two. Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the provision of a digital forensics investigator and access to the Washington County Digital Forensics Laboratory. Item five, consideration of resolution number fifty-six, one, six, dash, twenty-two. Warranting the contract for construction of the Ninety-Fifth Avenue Avery Street and Ninety-Third Avenue project, part of the Twalton Board Program. Item six, consideration resolution number five, six, one, eight, dash, twenty-two. Item six, consideration resolution number five, six, one, eight, dash, twenty-two. Awarding the bid for the construction of the twenty twenty-two pavement maintenance program. And finally, a number seven, consideration of resolution number five, six, one, nine, dash, two. Awarding the bid for the twenty twenty-two slurry seal program. Would any counselor like something removed and heard later tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas read.
Have a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on the motion? Seeing none, Counselor Sacco?
Hi.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Pratt? President Grimes?
Hi.
And I vote I also. All right, so moving on to special reports. Senator Wagner's been super patient as we allotted our chief of police with lots of praise. But the floor is yours, Senator Wagner, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To your new planner. I will just note that I also have a beetle. This is my COVID puppy right there. This is named after my daughter's favorite band. The the Fab Four out of Liverpool. And Steel, you must have a very good Zoom filter, sir. Or the Oregon Investment Council is investing your purse very well, because you're way too young to retire. Thank you for your service as well. Well, good to see everyone. And for the folks that I haven't had a chance to meet in person, I'm Rob Wagner, I'm the state senator for Senate District nineteen. Which is the communities of Lake Oswego, Westland, Tuolton, Southwest Portland, Durham, River Grove, and the Hamlet. And I also get the opportunity to serve as the majority leader in the state senate. And I truly want to thank you for inviting me, right? And to let you know that I miss seeing you in person. I used to keep a true in-person office at the Oregon Nurses Association on Lower Boones Ferry Road. And I hope to be back there, actually, when we when we can get back in person. I did see some of you at the Regatta Run, it's like a forever ago, and of course, for me, it wasn't a run, it was more like a swift walk. Except maybe not the swift part, and I look forward to many of the upcoming events as well. Also, congrats on Charter Amendment thirty-four dot oh-nine. Very sensible, good government measure, and I know that I exchanged messages with the mayor. And you're waiting on the Clackamas County vote. Don't get me started on Clackamas County elections, I will pause and not not comment. Could write a dissertation on that, but. And and to our our council and to the amazing city staff at the municipal level. You do incredible work every single day. Your civic service to the community is is beyond. It's just, it's just amazing. So a little bit about me, for those that don't know, I worked in and around education and a lot of my professional identity. Was an advocate for Portland Community College. When I left. The college, I was the executive officer of the foundation, so raising scholars money for low-income students and still had a huge tie to worse. And higher education issues. My wife Lori is also on PCC elected board of directors. And she likes to remind me that she actually represents more constituents than I do. The zones for PCC are quite rich, and her zone includes the community of Tuolton, too. Which is great, because I actually came out of local government, I was a school owner, as many of you know, and. In terms of the state legislature, not everybody necessarily knows. Who might be watching tonight, what the different levels of government do, so for folks that are joining in. The Oregon citizen legislature, we come from a variety of backgrounds, and for, again, for those that don't know, a five-month. Legislative session every odd year, and a one-month session every even year. And we set the policy framework, the folks that come together around the state through our Oregon revised statutes. And then we evaluate and approve the governor's recommended budget. And I also want you to know that here in Walton, that I have an open door. I really look forward to, I have a new chief of staff, my my staff, Gordon Levitt, is moving on. As an attorney and his wife got an amazing job in Washington DC, so he'll be moving, moving back and I'll be introducing. I look forward to Andy Vought, who's my new chief, coming on and getting a chance to meet all of you and spending some real significant time. With all of you in the community. So. It's been beyond challenging for Oregonians, for our shared constituents. I know that is true in professional life. It's true in civic life, it's true in personal life. We've navigated the difficulties of COVID nineteen and continue to see that. We see disruption in our communities, we see it across the world, and we're working diligently on recovering our economy. And as we put our communities back on a pathways to stability, that the two words that just keep coming to me. It's like having conversations with constituents are stability and civility. And we have to also acknowledge that the new normal that we talk about for a lot of people, the old normal wasn't necessarily the good days. And the disparities that we saw during the pandemic have made a lot of that even more evident. And we hear from constituents, a lot of the things that are that are touching on our families, sometimes we talk about bill numbers. Or we talk about budgets, but when we talk about these policies, sometimes lost in the conversation lives that are truly impacted. There's a family right now that's waking up, they're going to bed, or feeding their family, and they're wondering about their jobs, career. Their health, the healthcare of their family, their schools, can they even afford childcare, the cost of prescription drugs? And their their safety is paramount as well. And state government, I think it's important that we're a true partner with our municipal governments, and that every community across the state plays a really important role. And I hope that this next year, in the twenty twenty-three session, I know it seems a ways away, that everyone can make their way down to the state portal. There's a lot of pretty engaging issues that we work on, whether or not that's revenue taxation, or budgets, or education, civil and criminal law, et cetera, et cetera. It'd be easy to focus on many different issues, as I said, just like you, if someone asks you the question, what have you been working off the city? I'm sure that it would take a very long time for you, I'm sure, staying in the grocery store line or seeing somebody in the park. What's going on in the city? Well, do you have some time to sit down? And we can go through every single thing that you're working on. As you can imagine, at state government, we've had a huge fun building on housing and addressing cost of mental health. These systems take time. It takes time to be able to hire the people and implement these practices. There's also three areas, especially coming out of this last legislative session, sometimes a little bit below the radar screen. Or or you hear about policies, not necessarily sure how to truly engage on them. The first one I want to touch on of these three is around stronger schools. And again, this one's personal to me. I have four teenagers, I can still see they're teenagers. My sixteen-year-old daughter got her driver's license, so look out everyone on the roads. Then I have a son and a daughter who were graduates of the good class, the twenty twenty-one. Class. And I just, sometimes it almost makes me emotional, like my son coming to me and saying, you know, Dad, I wish I could have had just one prom. And when you think about the impact on us, but also on our educators and the people working in our schools. One thing that we know was that there were stressors for our kids, but also for educators. And for other school personnel. So this last legislative session addressed some of the shortages. The difficulty in finding substitute teachers, we put a hundred million dollar package together of investments. To assist in recruiting and retaining education staff. And again, it's a it's a first step on our pathway to recovery. Also expanding summer learning opportunities, and again, doubling down on the work that we were doing with implementation around the Student Success Act. Around mental health treatment for our kids. The second big area that you hear a lot about, especially when it's election time, and there's a lot of those ads that are up on television trying to scare people. We've been working with our local governments on true public safety issues. And this last legislative session, we passed legislation that was focused on reducing crime and improving public safety in a real way. In communities across our state. We know that preventing and solving crime, especially violent crime, is paramount into what things are of, communities are thinking about right now. We did pass legislation with the support of our district attorneys and community-based organizations to reduce unnecessary traffic stops. While supporting and improving best practices around law enforcement and with community-based organizations that I said, focusing on violent prevention, especially violence. Also, it's not just to lock people up, which I know you talking about the police force locally. But also to work diligently to keep folks out of the prison pipeline. So implementing best practices and resources in parole and post-post-prison supervision was the big arrow this last session. And finally, the last issue that I want to touch on is what I consider the existential crisis of our times. That is around climate change. We are very proud that we kept the ball rolling, following our hundred percent clean bill that we passed in the twenty-one session. We had a hundred million dollar climate resilience budget that supports drought-impacted communities. Sometimes you hear a lot about the urban world divide, but there was real diligence in trying to work real rural communities to try to make those critical investments. Trying to keep Oregonians across states safe from extreme weather events and making important investments that will reduce carbon. And you may have read just this week about the private forest accord, I'm really proud of the work. That bringing different stakeholders together to try to find a solution that doesn't necessarily end with a ballot measure. Or people fighting it out, or truly people coming in and trying to do the best they can to try to protect our forests for the future. Then finally, looking through the meeting packet in advance of tonight, I think it was so wonderful to see the array of community events that you and your staff put on. Blender Dash looks especially fun, Mud, Obstacles, and Zombies. It sounds like a lot of what we deal with in capital, especially at the end of any legislative session. And it's it's nice to see that our communities, after very difficult years, are also really returning to the sports. I ran cross-country in track, I was not that fast, when you see Caleb Lakeman just absolutely tearing up the track. At the state championships, it was so fun to see just how fast they're running. And then finally, finally, I I look forward to working with you and hearing from you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And more importantly, that I hear your feedback about what we could be doing better together as we think about planning for the twenty twenty-three session, when we'll be back in session. And so thanks so much.
Thank you, Senator Wagner. Question for the Senator. Counselor Pratt?
Hi, Senator Wagner. I just wanted to say. I've always appreciated that about you is that at our level local, we we get a lot of. Actions from the state and the county that are dictated to us, and then we have to implement those and come up with some need to implement. So I really appreciate that you listen, because often. It's hard to make a generic. I guess, rule that applies to every city, no matter what size. And so, and I've always found that you have an open door and you listen to us, so I really appreciate that. And I had a question and I'm losing it, but. I guess, what do you, knowing that, I mean, right now, you just know you're gonna have a woman governor. But I'm wondering, what do you see? Do you see these three issues, or do you see other issues coming up for the next session?
Well, I think, thank you, Counselor Pratt, for the for the question. I think a lot of it does determine what happens with the makeup of the legislature and the different priorities that people might. Be bringing in terms of the governors, depending on who that is. What her legislative agenda might be and how we are working in the legislature together. We also don't know, and I hate to paint that cloud, but I've been around the legislature for about twenty-seven years. And I've lived through two pretty significant recessions in two thousand one, two thousand three, and then the Great Recession in twenty oh eight, twenty ten. I'm really, sometimes I talk to our new state senators like Kate Lieber and Casey Jama and Deb Patterson. And all they know is budgeting with people coming in and saying, can we have additional resources? And we actually haven't, the federal government's been providing that. But when you're talking about having to to narrow the scope of what you what you can do, I think some of it might be responding to some of the financial hit. That that it's likely the state's gonna take. I don't think, again, I I don't think we have a really set broad agenda. Coming into the twenty-three session, I think it's going to be working with a new governor to kind of establish where it's gonna look like. But it's it's no. I don't think a big surprise to think that the things that are are on our community's mind around housing, around childcare. Continuing investments and addressing climate change, you know, these are things that are are gonna be a focus and making sure that. Folks in education have the services that they need to be able to provide supports for students that have really been impacted.
This is just a kind of my own personal question, but you know, that that it's wonderful to get that, you know, over seventeen percent kicker. And it looks like the next one's gonna be huge, too, but. What would it take to change that so that money's kind of put in a rainy day fund?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question. We actually, the corporate kicker a few years ago, and actually partnering with the with the business associations. We unlocked that from state constitution, so so we have that money going into rainy day fund for schools. Actually, when I was first getting involved in legislature, nineties Oregon was one of the worst reserving states in the country. If folks who remember the early two thousands, school districts like Hillsborough had to cut seventeen days off the end of their school year. Now we actually did a pretty good job salting away some of those resources. The kicker remains exceedingly frustrating. I'm sure when you go to DC or you have conversations with people in other states, you try to. Explain the way that we actually function. That there's a crystal ball and there's a state economist and they come up with a number, and when they miss it short, we have to figure out how to. How to inform reserves, and when they miss it large, like they have over the last many, many years, then you have this kind of. Tax break that nobody anticipated that goes back out. It would be nice to be able to get at that, but I'm gonna be realistic. Once, once the folks sent it out in the late nineties and locked it into the constitution, it's a huge question to be able to engage. Enough people to understand what the impact of the kicker is in terms of trying to solve it away. From my own personal feeling, I think that. Something where families up to maybe two fifty thousand dollars receive all of their kicker or. But maybe, you know, higher income folks, that you would be able to have a kicker catastrophe. You'd be able to kind of salt away those resources if you hit particular triggers in terms of downfall in the economy. I've heard a lot of people, kind of regardless of of what their income is, sometimes their partisan makeup. Or they look at this as a structural flaw in terms of our revenue system. But it's very, very hard, it's been locked in the constitution to actually to actually get at it.
Other questions for the Senator? Counsel President Grimes?
Thank you. Thank you for joining us and thank you for sharing of what's going on down in Salem. I have a request, and this is something that has really been difficult for our community. We've been dealing with the subject of the proposed tolling I two oh five. And it's a situation for us specifically here, as well as some of your other jurisdictions. Tuolton or Lake Oswego, Westland, that a lot readily agrees that there's gonna be an enormous amount of traffic. That is gonna leave two oh five, go on the surface streets around there, try to avoid. The link on two oh five. And our community, we already are very stressed with traffic congestion, travel times. And as a council, we've done a lot of work, passed a special transportation bond to try to. Deal with traffic activity, travel time around our city. And the proposed tolling, as it stands right now, is an enormous shift. On our community, on our business community, and on the citizens that live here. And I was just wondering, you know, what what your takeaway is, what your insight is, and the tolling question. And how you could partner with us and help us as we try to work through this and make sure that the needs. Of our community are met, along with, you know, ODOT's requirement for raising funds for infrastructure work.
Yeah, for that question, Counsel President Grimes. I am firmly opposed to the tolling scheme you see out of ODOT and then trying to to do everything I can to work with our local communities. To try to figure out a different, a different way forward. I wasn't in the legislature when House Bill twenty seventeen passed. When I looked at the legislative history, it was interesting that there were, you know, it was broadly bipartisan, the way that it got structured. There was business community support across the board for it. I don't think that people were looking at what the negative impacts would be. Especially when you're only talking about tolling two oh five and the Abernathy. I told folks that I have inherited this amazing district and it's an honor to serve, but I call it the bottleneck district. I start up at the Tuoloters, I go all the way down to the two seventeen interchange, I pick up two oh five all the way to Abernathy Bridge, I get forty-three going back up. And you can only imagine your frustration when I talked to. And you can only imagine your frustration when I talk to Jules Walters, the mayor of Westland, or our county commissioners in terms of what we're hearing. We've been pressuring ODOT to try to do a better job, not only sort of explaining to community about why they're going this direction. But also trying to back on it. I don't know how impactful, I'm going to be honest, in terms of response. I think when you talk about mitigation, that's going to be a crucial factor. The side streets around Westland, there is, people are exceedingly upset about what what the impact is going to. So I I wish I had an easy answer there. I want to be a partner in the effort to try to pressure ODOT to do a much better job. Thinking about what the the ancillary negative impacts are going to be.
Talking about my favorite subject. You know, ODOT's made, I guess, there was a move forward, getting them to say that they'll deal with the mitigation and other things. But when it comes down to it, I don't feel like anybody's really feeling assured that that will happen or it will happen in a week. That anybody will be satisfied with other than ODOT. So when it gets to that, I. Are you someone we could contact to help reach out to ODOT to help kind of hold them to task, I guess?
Yeah, I think absolutely. And more than that, I'd like to be at the table with you with. In terms of solution that you're hearing, I've had comments with Metro Counselor Lewis. I've had conversations with Mayor Walters. I'm having constant conversations with Sonya Fisher and some of the Clackamas County Commissioners. I mean, it's universal heartburn around what's what's happening here. The legislative response on this is limited to passing public policy that would truly override. What passed in House Bill twenty seventeen and kind of leveraging just public pressure. For, you know, really kind of forcing ODOT to take a half step back before they before they implement, um, implement this. The practice. And so, you know, I I would love to be at the table, like I've had pocket conversations with different stakeholders. But maybe even pulling a little bit more of a summit together, trying to figure out, you know, how we can work towards solution. So far, the response, I I'm unsatisfied with the responses that seeing out of ODOT.
Questions, comments? Council Reyes.
Thank you, Senator, for coming to see us. What happens when, um, just just out of curiosity, because I'm not in the meetings that you attend. As to the specific topic that we're talking about, uh, two oh five weapons, if, um, there's more pushback. From people like you, our community, um, I mean, what what is it? What's the next step? Do they really consider that? And they say, okay, there's just been a lot of pushback from us. From from the community, from the for the majority of the people. Uh, maybe we can amend or redo something to get you back. Because I mean, you weren't there, I wasn't around, and maybe the the way people read it back then was a little different than what they are seeing now. What what is the, because I want to, I'm wondering, what as we ask questions, you're opposing, we're all upset. But does it continue moving forward or is there a way, is there something that can happen to amend something like that?
I mean, I, our our tools, um, thank you for the question, Council Reyes. Are are really limited to passing legislation that would override, uh, ODOT's. Scheme, you know, from a legal perspective, that that would be the limit of what legally we could do at a legislative level. Back in twenty twenty one, feels like it's all kind of blending together. You know, there was a, an effort by Representative Prusak, and I supported that, to have language drafted to override. Uh, tolling as it related to two oh five, and that was dismissed. And we had the folks that were sort of the powers at the time, Senator Johnson, Senator Byer, Representative McLean and others. That that really were responsible for crafting the legislate was House Bill twenty seventeen and we were shut down. And, um, so I, you know, I would actually love to hear from you. What what is ODOT saying back to you? Oh, the the last few months? And your questioning or your staff's questioning of of this is rolling out or what the impacts are in community?
They are implementing HB two thousand seventeen per legislature. So they're, um, pointing back to that bill and the requirements and then the update to the bill. As their purpose in life and they're just executing the good that you gave them. Or I should say, you, the legislature gave them.
Yeah, and I think what they say is. Tell us what metric we should measure diversion on or like give us this appropriate metrics. But nothing, yeah, like, we're moving forward, but just how we should measure and and evaluate.
And I'm I'm kind of hopeful, quote unquote, hopeful with the. Agreements and deals made to get the first H two JPEG that ODOT will follow. ODOT conceded quite a few items, uh, especially the creation of a group of the cities. And those concerned on two oh five, that will actually have positive impact. That they'll have to listen to the, you know, Westlands, Walton, um, you know, Lake Oswego. Uh, and other folks that are on two oh five Clackamas County when it comes implementing tolling. So I think they're slowly starting to make some changes, but then very frustrating. And it took, you know, the back and forth of JPAC when they needed to get that approval for the NIPA and the dollars that they finally. Agreed to some concessions.
And they still, the language, like the diversion language, just that's what like with the mitigation, it just says, their document. Says as needed, you know, do they get to determine as needed? It's not really clear what that means.
Turn, you determine that there's a bottleneck on Stafford Road. But what's the fee mechanism and what's the timeline to resolve it? Because they intend on implementing only first and then fixing diversion, which seems backwards.
Yeah, I think that's one of the biggest frustrations, exactly what the mayor is touching on is. It's kind of the cart before the horse of wanting to implement the toll and get the revenue coming in. And then see what it causes and work to mitigate it. But by that time. You know, back of our community is crushed. I mean, Borland Road for us, I mean, we have, we have a major hospital. We've got three schools. We have a church that has our community health office as well as our food bank. It's already at oftentimes that roundabout backs up for order of a mile on any given afternoon as it is. And it's just, it's beyond. And, you know, they they readily admit that there's going to be additional traffic. Is communities, but then as far as what to do, it seems like a wait and see. And, you know, simple things like asking where they place the gantries on two oh five could be of a huge benefit to ourselves. Westland, Lake Oswego, a whole Stafford area. And to be able to get them to have a conversation on that level where we could see some very, you know, solid ideas. And options and have a really productive dialogue about things like that. I mean, if you could help us get to a place like that and help facilitate that, that would be just priceless for us.
I think it's, you know, it's going to take all all levels here, municipal, state. You know, I, in reading Senator Wyden's comments in response to the preliminary draft, and there was a lot of upset. You've talked, there's a huge federal infrastructure package that we've passed, but I haven't really seen diligently, at least any outreach to my office. About how this might be leveraged against House Bill twenty seventeen. I'd also be curious, community-based organizations and the business community that were so supportive of twenty seventeen when it passed. I mean, I was, you know, because it's one of those COVID things, you can pull your, you know, your split screen up. But, you know, I was just looking at Oregon Business and Industry Association and this glowing thing about House Bill twenty seventeen. But I think just trying to get everybody together, um, you know, whatever, whatever we can do, again, I'm not going to dodge. I just think we come back into the legislative session the day after MLK Day in in January. And I could introduce legislation, but that bill failed, you know, passed two to seven. I'll continue to push against it and whatever we can do, working together to try to get ODOT to kind of change their tune here. I'm, I want to be a part of the conversation, a part of the solution.
Then, because I don't want to keep you here all night, Senator Wagner, my my two cents would be, uh, keep your door open. When the MMC comes knocking, the Metropolitan Major Association, our consortium, I'm sorry. We're going to have quite, you know, a list of things that we're looking for. That will import, you know, impact the whole metro region just versus specifically the cities, but it's all done in conjunction. So I know you were, uh, you had your door open about, and we're quite surprised that the MMC was for pay increases for legislators. And that, you know, these one of the things that I just hope that when the session comes in, you know, we'll come in because we're going to have quite a list. The list is being built as we speak. What our crystal ball is, is for twenty twenty three, and the things we'll be asking, uh, you know, both are, uh, both houses in the legislature. To, uh, you know, help us that on, uh, everything from transportation to mental health services, UGB expansion. EV infrastructure, uh, safer routes to schools, there's all kinds of things that we're going to be looking at. And I just ask that when we knock on the door, you let us in, uh, and kind of sad to hear Gordon's leaving. He's been a great resource, but, um, hopefully the, I forget the name of the one who's coming in is as responsive. Gordon was very responsive when we used to reach out to him.
Great, and absolutely. And as soon as you do, um, develop out even the preliminary policy proposals that you're seeing in coordination with other cities. Would love an opportunity to have maybe even an in-person sit down.
All right.
Talk about that, to try to get ahead of those conversations. So if there's legislation that's being introduced or budgets, we might be able to impact. The upcoming, or whoever that might be, to try to build some resources in. Makes it a lot easier for our job when the governor's recommended budget actually reflects some of those priorities. It's easier for us to kind of hold on to it than try to find new new revenue to try to pay for things. But, um, again, we'd love to sit down as soon as we can find time.
Okay, great, because, uh, yeah, the MMC is going to start meeting in person at least quarterly now, so. Uh, once we closer, well, I'll make sure you get an invite.
Awesome. Look forward to it.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me. Take care.
Our second special report, uh, our summer twenty twenty two programs and events preview. And I I see Julie, welcome Julie.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor Bivinick and member of the council. It is our distinct pleasure to be here tonight, talk to you about our summer program preview. And I'm here with Sarah Justa Dawson from the Twolton Library.
Hello. Not sure that I'm, am I showing up on the screen?
And I'll go ahead and share my screen here. And here we go. So it has been a while. Um, well, it has been a year since we were in front of you. And I am very excited to say that we are moving forward with a quote unquote normal. Summer, uh, and what we're finding is that after two years of canceling and modifying and flexing. We're realizing, man, it's been a long time since we've done things in our, you know, supposed normal way. And there's a lot of relearning that we're finding we're doing. But it's very exciting. The first one is coming back that we have not done since twenty nineteen is the Twolton Blender Dash. Um, and thanks to Senator Wagner for the shout out on that. And I do process it's more exciting and more fun, maybe not more exciting, but more fun, the legislative session. Right now, we have about seven hundred and fifty kids registered, and this is happening on Saturday, June fourth. So it's just, um, less than two weeks away, and this is our fun run for kids who just fit five to fifteen. Happening in Kennedy Park, so we're really excited to have that come back. And spending a lot of time getting that going right now.
And over at the library, we, um, first want to brag about some things we've been up to. We've recently completed a project in collaboration with Washington Cooperative Library Services. And with Tiger Tuallaton School District, every student at TTSD has a library card. There are some really super cute cards you can see that are designed for younger kids. We have, um, virtual cards for the elders, and we're really, really excited to have that connection. Of course, you've heard us talk about our Makerspace. We've had over a thousand visits, um, when the first six months of operating it. And it keeps gaining more interest. I think we get calls pretty much daily asking what's going on and how do I get involved? So, summer reading is coming back and the stickers are coming back. Last year, we did a bingo-based game. We are back to twenty minutes of reading equals a sticker on your reading log. And this is for every age. Um, for kids and teens, we are giving a free book signup. And for every log completed, um, we want to get as many books into kids' hands as possible. It's a great way to keep reading success going. Usually, we do, we did one free book at signup and one free book for the first law. Now, keep reading, get more books. We've also expedited our teen volunteer program, and we had a program while we were closed. Called Tween Readers. We were rewarding kids who were documenting that they were reading books to their people in their family. Or maybe a very patient dog in their house. We've had some really great engagement for those, and they're going to join our teen volunteers with reduced amount of hours. And some, some of our easier tasks, uh, but we're really excited to bring them in as well. And programs, we found last year that bringing our storytimes out into the community and into our parks. Really got more of our community to see us and to see what we were about. So we will be bringing our storytimes to Iback, Jergens, and Atfolity. We are known as the music library. And, um, apart from our kickoff on the day after Blender Dash, we do not mess with Blender Dash. We have a kickoff on June fifth, and then in July, on every Sunday, we have kids musicians in concert. We've got Aaron Nigel Smith, we've got Red Yarn, we've got Micah and me, and somebody who's new to us, Kelly Welly. There's been some interesting press with Aaron Nigel Smith and Red Yarn have done an album together. So we're, we're pretty excited to have both of them coming. If you were around last summer, you saw us getting messy, uh, in the name of science on the plaza, and we're bringing it back. We have some new things like Friday Craft and Snack with our new, newish, um, children's librarian Alec. He's got some great plans for that, using the Makerspace. You know, we have this note about collaborating with TTSD for free summer lunch, and I have to say that we, TTSD does not know if they will be able to do that. So we're, we're fingers crossed that we can provide that for our community. We don't know for sure. And the Willow Valley Chamber Music Festival is coming back to us. The picture you see, it's kind of on the slant outside of our plaza, our four musicians playing beautiful chamber music. They focus on contemporary pieces as well, and we'll be bringing a internationally known composer, uh, to us in August as well. So pretty exciting stuff.
All right. So with things that never stopped, um, even during twenty twenty and twenty one was summer camp. We made a lot of shifts, we made a lot of modifications. But we have been running this successful program all through everything. This summer, we have eight weeks of, we have programs for kids in grades one through twelve. Six hundred and seventy kids right now currently enrolled. And we are, fingers crossed, uh, we are planning on bringing back our teen adventure camp. Side note, if you know anyone who is twenty one or older and doesn't mind driving passenger van full of teenagers, we are hiring. It is the most fun summer job that you will ever have, not you personally, but anybody you know. Or hey, anybody, I am willing to have anybody on team who, uh, you know, loves teenagers. And doing amazing adventures over the summer. So we've got a great program happening this summer for summer camp, all happening over in Community Park. And traveling out to all sorts of fun places through Oregon. And we also are bringing concerts back and much like Jeriann, I'm sorry, not Jeriann, Sarah mentioned. I know that Jeriann is here in the audience tonight as well, but as Sarah had mentioned, learning about the benefits of. The benefits of bringing programs to our different neighborhoods. Those were things that we did as a modification. When, um, during some COVID lockdowns and during the summers of 2020, 21. We found that that was also very, very popular concerts was bringing concerts, not only to the plaza at the Commons, but also. To individual parks. And so we're going to continue that again this summer. We're also going to be trying out something new and that will be some two lunchtime concerts. At Plaza on Wednesdays, one in July and one in August. We're really excited. Um, there's a lot of great new restaurants and businesses are going in at the Commons and so we would love to. We're actually be part of that this summer and, and the new splash pad. So. There'll be a lot of really good stuff happening. Wednesday's lunchtime concerts, Wednesday afternoons, there's the library. So it's going to be a really, it's going to be a very exciting place. Um, one concert I'd like to draw special attention to is the one on August 5th. Some of you might remember that as the Crawfish Festival Weekend. We have an extra special concerts, uh, Radical Revolution is a band that some of you may have seen. They were. Performers that were very, very popular at the Crawfish Festival. And so they're coming back. For one night only in Twelton, Oregon. Um, lots of reborn sort of eighties hits cover band. You will be guaranteed to be on your feet dancing and we're very excited to have them. So. Mark your calendars. We've got a lot of great performers this summer for our concerts. And also something that has been modified for the past couple of years. We are modifying a little bit back to our pre-pandemic state for Viva Tuallaton. So Viva Tuallaton will be held at a Folity Park on Saturday, July 9th. It will be from noon until seven. And this is our celebration of arts and culture and this is a collaboration between the Parks and Recreation Department. The Twelton Library and, um, the Administration and Volunteer Services Department. It's a cross-departmental collaboration. And I couldn't have picked a better, a better team to work with. And we're really, really excited for this year's performances and lineup. Um, some of them are performers that you've seen in the past. One of them is brand new and that is the White Lotus Dragon and Lion Dance. That picture on the top left-hand corner, that is a picture of that group. We're really excited. Um, just visually, culturally, a really, really, um, exciting addition to this event. So. Hope to see you all there.
And we are going to continue to keep our community engaged with volunteer work and volunteer services this summer. Um, we have 200 volunteers signed up for support for Blender Dash and Viva Toilet. And I think that number is actually just going to grow as we get closer to those events. Uh, we have 125 summer teens and tweens, the library summer, uh, teen program and team Tuallaton. And then we are continuing our DIY volunteer programs. Uh, we've got 75 folks signed up. To help make our parks trails and green spaces just a little prettier, um, remove a big litter and. Taking care of invasive plants.
And we are so, so thankful to our volunteer services department. The events that we do and the work that happens in the library and in the parks literally could not be done without them. Uh, we also have really great full, full roster of programs at the One Eight Pole Center, the active older adult center here in Tuallaton. Uh, lots of day trips, there's hikes, there's Earthwise Crew, which is a new program that's in partnership with the Volcanic Sustainability Network. Um, yes, seniors do actually go on my rafting trips. Um, and then we'll have, you know, stretching and, um, programs like that afterwards. Uh, lots of enrichment classes, which is the very popular ongoing health and fitness program. So if you haven't been over to the pole center recently. Stop by and say hello. I know a lot of people are wondering about Meals on Wheels and when that will return and. Right now it's, it's looking like tentatively right after Labor, I'm sorry, Memorial Day weekend. Um, we're looking at that possibly being a start date, but we're working with our partners on Wheels and we're really excited and. To get them back in the building and offer service.
And of course our police, they're busy all year round, but they really have a great impact with our community during summer. With our great camps, they've got a session for sixth grade going at the end of June. So. Just about the time we're a little bit bored because school's done. And then there are three sessions for middle schoolers, um, in July and August. So. Um, everybody. I, I, I love this picture with the dog. You know, all the kids and the dogs gets in on it.
And registration for grade camp opened, um, just last week. So if you know anyone who is in sixth grade or entering sixth grade or middle school. Uh, sessions are filling up, so registration is available on the website. And I know it was a lot. That was a lot of internal city of Tuallaton programs. We do so much, but we don't do it all. We can possibly do it all. And we really want to. Um, give a shout out and a thanks to some of our partners. To who offer all sorts of other great programs. So Twelton Historic Society, one of them, longtime partner. Um, that was in the, the Heritage Center, which you see in the bottom left-hand corner. They are doing all, you know, they haven't stopped doing programs throughout everything, um. Coming up on June 1st, they have a program on traveling the Oregon Trail. I know that they recently had all about Cherry Ann Thompson. And, um, they have a really good variety of programs. And so we want to say thank you to them and what they do for our community. Willowbrook Arts Camp is returning. This is Willowbrook's 40th anniversary. And that camp is happening at Brown's Ferry Park. So we're really excited to have them back again. Skyhawk Sport Camps, these happen in all sorts of all different places in Tuallaton and have been very, very popular and. Really fill that niche that we don't fill with Willowbrook or with our city camps. In addition to that, new this year, I'm real excited to partner with a group called Skate Like a Girl. And Skate Like a Girl is a, an organization. Um, they're based out of Portland and you do not have to be a girl. They're all gender programs. They started is for, um, learn to skate for girls, but it is really a. Real inclusive, learn how to skateboard, very empowering, very much, um, developing confidence. And leadership in kids through skateboarding. So they have a fantastic program, um, that's happening this time in Community Park. Alder Creek Kayak and Canoe, they returned. In fact, they are back. They are at Brown's Ferry Park. Right now they are doing. Excuse me, weekend canoe kayak and stand at paddle rentals. After Memorial Day, they will be transitioning to seven days a week. Tuallaton River is beautiful any time of year, but especially wonderful in the summertime. Um, and so you can get all of your until needs taken care of right here at Brown's Ferry Park. And of course our Twelton City Youth Sports Leagues, um, really serve. Such a huge part of our community with soccer and football and. Youth baseball and youth softball, um, lacrosse. The whole gamut of the sports. And so we really are appreciative of all of the work that they do. They're largely volunteer-run organizations and serve so many of our communities to youth. So. Uh, it's great to see them out in the parks and, um, really making good use of our communities. So. That is our presentation for tonight. We really just want to say. That it is an honor and a pleasure to continue to serve the, the community of Tuallaton with these programs and. It's always a pleasure to see all of you and, and be able to talk about the great stuff that we're doing.
Yeah, we're, we're so excited to get going on the summer.
With that, happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Julie or Sarah? Counselor Pratt.
Just in case we have any community members listening, can you remind us what's the best way to, um, sign up to volunteer?
Yes, to sign up to volunteer, all you need to go do is go to the City of Twelton's website. TweltonOregon.gov forward slash volunteer. Or just go to the main webpage and, uh, there's a, you can just volunteer and it will take you right to that page.
It'll show you all kinds of opportunities. There's more than, even more than we got to talk about tonight.
But there's a, on, on the main page, tweltonoregon.gov, on the right side, there's a, a square that says get involved.
Thank you, Sherilyn.
Yep.
Other questions or comments for Sarah and Julie?
I'm just so happy to see all of these things returning. And all of the in-person activities and music and concerts. I'm just thrilled and. Thank you for setting it all up and all the hard work to get it arranged and. The amount of volunteers we already have for so many of these activities is just, just so heartwarming to see. So I can't wait to get out there and see everybody.
We can't wait to see you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thanks for coming tonight, Julie and Sarah. And yeah. Uh, I think people are itching again and go enjoy the, when the good weather like today. And like the new, the new programs, see how they work out, the lunchtime concerts, whole idea.
I think Sarah, Sarah was telling me the other day that we had a music program in the library that like got 200 people.
Yeah, um, Classical Up Close, which is an outreach program run by musician, the Oregon Symphony contacted me and said, we would like to be. We would like to do our kids outreach program at your library. They did two sessions a couple of Sundays ago and between those two sessions, we had about 200 people. They've decided that Tuallaton is their classical up close kids location for next year as well. So I'm really excited.
Yeah, to my point, to your point, Mayor, of like people are itching to get out and get involved in things. So.
Yep, eager to get connect and try these new programs out. It's going to be fun. All right. Well, thanks again for coming tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So that brings us to items removed from consent. We had none. Uh, then we move on to council communications. So as I mentioned in the work session, you have the memo from Sherilyn. Uh, about, uh, you know, us meeting again in person. So I just want to revisit, uh, our thoughts on this. Uh, Sherilyn and I had a discussion about the memo and the technology involved. Cause, uh, we, it was kind of interesting, her memo came out, wasn't it the same day? That DLCD had the fiasco of trying to run a hybrid meeting. It was an eight-hour meeting. And it was a nightmare. And so it didn't go as well as planned. Uh, so I'm hearing, you know, that people are challenged with the hybrid meeting format. Uh, we do have to accommodate for the new law with the state. But, um, I just want to say I'm in no super rush. I know Bates is here. I know. If you want, can you tell folks about the ideal or Sherilyn? Um, that, you know, we've been in the pole centers for long, we've forgotten, I guess, Nancy, you know. Nancy, you were a council when we actually had real cameras and TV, you know, Twelton Valley Access would actually have. Be running the show instead of Bates scrambling. Um, so that is one of the things that you saw in the memo was that, you know, Twelton Valley. Uh, Access TV will install the cameras, get back the way, uh, it should be, you know, professional video, professional rotation. Um, they will run the, uh, band meeting, if you will, instead of having. Uh, Bates scramble with a webcam and try to make everything right. Cause remember back in the day when we had fancy new microphones? That was a challenge for Bates too. They had the, you know, we were screwing up the microphones. So one of the things I want to talk is, you know, do we wait a little bit? Uh, and once we get an answer from Twelton Valley Access TV. Uh, so that we don't have, you know, like a DLCD meeting, you know, I'd rather not Bates running around scrambling, trying to figure what's going on. Or have the meeting go poorly. Whereas if we just pause until, uh, what'd you say, uh, Sherilyn, like. Maybe July, uh, the, the stuff will be installed. So I'm going to pass this over to Sherilyn and Bates. Cause I'd rather, uh, wait a little bit. Cause I know we're all kind of sort of, we have the love hate relationship with Zoom. Uh, we do want to get back together. I want to make sure, uh, that Bates doesn't go down the street screaming. For two or three meetings, uh, you know, that he doesn't have to. So Sherilyn and Bates. How would we work if we waited like an extra couple of weeks if, uh, Twelton Valley Access get everything up and running?
Well, one of the questions that the mayor asked me on Friday was, what is our confidence level? Uh, that, uh, if we, when we get back together, that, uh, it won't be a DLCD situation. And I was like, I don't think it's that high, honestly. Um, I think it could be rocky and asking, talking to Bates a little bit about. About it. I think there's two options. One is to. Um, the, is to move to the new Tuallaton City Services Building. And do like what was at the budget committee meeting last week. Um, it's not ideal. It's not totally set up for that, but it is workable. Um, it will be clunky and there's the potential of, um. Of it being a little turbulent and rocky. Um. Another option is to stay virtual, which has worked fairly well. Um, and.
Until today.
This year, yeah.
Um, it has worked fairly well so far in the staff perspective and from a production perspective. We can get TVCTV, um, and to get the AV equipment moved over to the. Twelton City Services Building and get the production going. Um, and then return, uh, fully in person. And I'll just turn it over to Bates from there.
Yeah, and, and keep Sherilyn and thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate you guys putting thought into this because it is. Uh, even though Megan and I look to make this look so professional. It's, uh, there's a lot that goes into it. And, and when you add the complexity of the remote. Uh, at the same time as in person, it, it adds a whole new level of complexity to it. Uh, and I was talking to Sherilyn today about how I don't like turning in like half-mate work. Like I don't like having to do, like, I'd like it to be nice and wonderful for you guys where you don't have to think about it and it just works and it won't. Won't be that in any situation immediately. We, back in July of last year, uh, had a plan in place for hybrid here, right? When we were thinking of the possibility of coming back in the, in place and, and we had a plan and it's, you know, elegant, but it was going to work. And we still have those plans, like Sherilyn was saying, down there and here, uh, even though. Really down there is, is right, right path. Because of shortages, uh, you know. Equipment and get, you know, contracts in place and trying to get equipment that may not be really available. Uh, I can't give you a definite timeline on when it would be ready for that. My, we, we're going to meet with, uh, TVTV. Uh, on Wednesday down there, uh, as, as a group to go over what it would look like and what it would take and. And the removal of the equipment from the pole and all that kind of stuff. So we'll have a better idea of what's required, uh, after this Wednesday. Um, but it does ask, beg the question, do you want to move forward immediately with in-person ones or to put a pin? Uh, in it, continue doing virtual and, and move down there when it's a little more ready. Even if it's maybe not fully baked, when you have microphones and you have better cameras and that kind of thing, there may be some in-between there of being perfect. And being, uh, make it up as we go along down there.
So that's, I guess, the easy question I think all of us would agree on is definitely meeting in the new, uh, you know, expanded office. Uh, with that, uh, conference room, because I think the budget meeting went well and it's a good space. Uh, it's easy to get to this parking, right connection will drop people off there. Who, uh, need to get there if they don't have an automobile. Um, so I think that location works. Uh, so the next question is, you know. Do we want to wait till either Bates has this meeting? Cause like I said, I'm, I'm not in no rush. I wanted to get back together in person. But I don't waste Bates' time trying to fix stuff that. Cause we want to meet, you know, next month. You know, if we have to wait two or three meetings, it's, it's fine with me. I'd rather have it so that we look professional, it does well. Yeah, we're going to have pickups because it's a startup. But, you know, why do this? Why do the curve twice, if you will? Once with the hokey equipment and then once with the real equipment in my mind, but thoughts from fellow counselors.
I totally agree with you. I mean, we're just potentially talking two or three meetings here, right? We'd still be on Zoom. Maybe more.
Maybe, maybe I can, Bates, you know, you just gotta start making the stuff in your garage, Bates. I mean, that's it.
Yeah, like who knows the supply chain.
We talked like maybe, uh, the first meeting of August. I mean, it will depend on what Bates hears on, on Wednesday, but. Let's like, let's say that's the out end is in August.
But it makes for us to not. Go in there knowing it's going to be glitchy, you know, we know there, there'll be issues, but why? We know there, there'll be issues, but why, why ask for trouble, I guess?
And if, if we do pick, say, August, right, as, as the first meeting of August has a, as a due date, if it's done ahead of time, we move back sooner than that, right? We notify and move back sooner than that. So, so, and if it takes longer, then we, we go live with what we have, which will be much more than we have right now. And, and we solidify it, you know, we go from 80 to 100% instead of from 50 to, you know? Who knows each meeting, you know, what we'd add at each week.
Other thoughts? Council Pratt?
Um, I like the idea of starting to meet in person and having that more personal interaction. I, I think it's, it's a good, it's good news. It's, it's, for me, it's good news because it's just showing that we're kind of recovering from such a traumatic time. So, so I'm excited for that. I like the idea of it. I mean, less glitchy as we meet. But also I, I've been, I mean, it's one of those things that I know that everything works well. You have final project to work on that you need the copier to work and then the last minute it just doesn't work. And you're like trying to, you know, pull your hair off and then, and then you're done with the program at the end and everything works back to normal. I mean, I, I think it's never going to be perfect. So even if we meet in August and one thing doesn't go right, I want us to get discouraged. That's us. I, that's, that's my point because there's always going to be something, whether it's mute buttons or something. I don't want to get discouraged just because we tried it once. We got to try it a couple of times to make it better. And so that's just my, my, my comment on this. Not to give up so quickly. So, but I'm, whenever I, I'm open to, I'm ready to. So and of course the available, the, the hybrid part is fun because it, and it's attractive because I may be on the road and can't make it on time to a meeting. So I log into whatever Zoom link is out there and start the meeting with, with everybody. So yeah, ready to meet in person.
Council Sacco, Council President Gray, sound good?
Yeah, I don't have any issues with, you know, with, with waiting. I'm just excited to get back in person. And, but also I don't want any unnecessary stress on any of the staff that's, you know, not needed. So if we need to wait a few more weeks, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd love us to be together, but I don't think we need to rush it and I don't want to waste any step time or money or anything like that to try to push us faster than we need to. And I do think it is important to be able to have, if we are going to have in-person meetings, that we can have people zoom in or remote in and have it be a very workable solution. Because like, I know one of the downsides of having everybody go back to the office and everybody's back at workplace and all these activities is it seems like COVID cases kind of are popping up. At least I work right now. We, we seem like we're getting a lot. And so you know how that works. You work with someone that had it. So then you have to kind of, you know, go off by yours for a few days. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that people can, if they want to join, but they just don't feel like they can come in person for a reason or the other. So yeah, August is fine with me or sooner if possible.
Council Pratt?
I'm going beyond this, but if, once we start meeting in person, if we really see like, God forbid, the hospital rates really going up in the fall, you know, will we just go back to Zoom at some point to?
Yeah, I would assume if something starts skyrocketing, OHA would change the rules again.
Okay, yeah.
You know, wherever, you know, there. I mean, you got, you got like Mollum County asking for masking and looking at you, they're starting masking for indoors. So, you know, we'll, we'll be able to pivot when, you know, if we have to go back, finally go back. But at least again, when we go back to in-person, the infrastructure is there.
Right.
It seems like in this time of, this is the new normal, that the deep, the default minimum is having Zoom
Right.
as an available piece. And what we're trying to do is make it be available to in-person and Zoom easily digestible and, and easier for the public to have access to government. And, and, and you can do that if, if you talk to generations around us, they're all achieving this in many different ways, right? Some are doing like telephone in lines, some are doing blanket, like you can only admit in writing, we're not accepting that. What we're, what we're trying to do is kind of the, the highest level, right? It's the, it's the hardest to achieve of, of everything. And so I think the citizens deserve that. And like the mayor was saying, it's, it'd be nice to turn in a, you know, something that's a little more polished.
All right. It sounds like we're good.
I wouldn't want people to just say, um, writing. I mean, not everybody can write, but they can speak. So, um, yeah, that would not something I would jump on board if there's an idea out there about that. Yeah, I'd rather meet with them somewhere six feet apart and scream at each other, but I could point across.
And one of the things that Bates helped me understand was that having a hybrid meeting is essentially like two meetings, right? Like you're running two meetings, you're running a Zoom meeting and you're running an in-person meeting. And we don't have production staff, right? Like Bates is our IS director and, and Megan is our deputy city manager and those are all we have. And so like being able to have the technology and have TVCTV help us through that, I think is important if we're going to run two meetings simultaneously.
Yep. So it's like we've got agreement on waiting, pausing to August and just keep us in a loop, Sherilyn and Bates on with Twalton Valley and supply chain issues and it goes quicker, it goes quicker. If not, we, you know, pencil in maybe the first meeting in August.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you all for your consideration with that.
All right. You know, don't you lose any more hair, Bates?
Yeah, yeah. And you were saying you lost, you know, you lose your hair out of technology, Council Ray. I had a full set. I started this job. It was log and luscious and.
Yeah, yeah. Especially with the webcam looking at the top of your head. Right. The other council communications. All right. With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting this, for this evening. Any discussion, solution, anyone? Nope. All right. Just go ahead, raise hands, signify that you're voting yes and have a great evening.
Everybody.